Still up your immunity, huh? I bet it does.
I'm sure it does.
Great, I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight and we're gonna go ahead and get the common council meeting started, so I'm calling it to order. Could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, if you could help us with the roll call, please?
Yes, Doug Saloga.
Here.
Jim Barron.
Jackie Valdi.
Here.
Wayne Dean.
Here.
Matt Grimmer.
Here.
Kevin Maples.
Here.
Tim Iker.
Here.
Kent Atwell.
Present.
Tom Hafner.
Here.
Jim Hamis.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna start off today with a public hearing and then we're gonna have citizens' comments on the public hearing and then we're going to potentially take action on the public hearing and then we will move to citizens' comments. So it's a little different than what we normally do at the councils, so I just wanted to give you that brief overview. So the public hearing is to receive public comment regarding the special assessments to be levied against the benefited property owners as a result of the construction and reconstruction of the public road known as Gulf Road and related improvements including the installation of a roundabout. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this public hearing?
Kent, I think we were gonna start with the presentation by.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot, you're correct. Mike, come on up.
All right, Mike Fort, city engineer. So I have with me Josh Waller, he was pretty instrumental with the project. He is a traffic engineer. He had done some of the review for the Chick-fil-A as far as their traffic, but then spearheaded the design for the roundabout and such. So I'm gonna bring Josh up, he's gonna talk a little bit about the project and the special assessment and the procedure on that, so Josh.
Thanks, Mike. So just like to read a brief statement to everybody. With the success of the Gulf Road Business Corridor, traffic volumes have increased over time. In 2011, the city completed an extensive study on the Gulf Road corridor area. A major point of that study was evaluating safety and finding a way to make the Gulf Road corridor safer. The main safety issue noted in that study was the number of access points and the limited available site distance from each of those access points due to horizontal and vertical curves on the roadway. From that study, the city came away with a proposed solution that included a roundabout at Gulf Court. When the development of the Chick-fil-A parcel was proposed in 2018-2019, the city required the developer to prepare a traffic impact analysis based on building footprints. This TIA analyzed existing traffic operations along Gulf Road between State Highway 83 and the City of Dellafield limits. The TIA found that with the increase in traffic at the Gulf Road and Gulf Court intersection would result in unacceptable delays for vehicles entering Gulf Court, which was the same conclusion reached in the 2011 corridor study. Due to this, a traffic signal and a roundabout were analyzed as alternative traffic control options. With the need for construction along the corridor, the city also took the opportunity to improve the access control along the corridor, as was noted in the 2011 corridor study. In order to achieve the desired access control changes, the roundabout became the leading alternative. The following are some of the benefits of the project. The roundabout provides similar, better level of service to the signal alternative and was built to accommodate future expansion, allowed for better access control, it assists in speed control along the corridor, roundabouts reduce severity of crashes, and it also reduces the number at access closure locations, minimize right-of-way impacts to adjacent property owners, similar construction costs to the full-built signal option. The TIA did not evaluate the cost of the full loom feature, which was required to allow delivery vehicles to make U-turns. This would have required additional land acquisition and loss of parking to surrounding businesses. Roundabout also provides easier flow for through traffic and eliminates unnecessary stops, in particular in off-peak times. So, just a quick overview, it's up on the screen, but overview of the project. So, the project started just to the east of State Highway 83, started with some access changes up here at the Starbucks intersection. We worked with these businesses to improve the access here for delivery vehicles to be able to still access the rear of all these businesses and be able to continue to circulate through. Closed an access at the Kohl's driveway here to again improve through flow, improve safety, and then the roundabout itself, which again eliminates unnecessary stops and allows vehicles to flow through at a good pace. The city was able to negotiate with Chick-fil-A the developers' cost share of $650,000 of the overall cost of the traffic improvements of $1.3 million. Thus, only half of the cost would need to be special assessed to the other parcels within the corridor. Because the project costs were at $1.3 million, a referendum was required. The resolution for referendum number 2019-02 was passed by the common council on January 21st, 2019. The question read, "Shall the common council be authorized to enter into public works contracts for the purpose of construction modifications to the reconstruction of a portion of Gulf Road at a cost not to exceed $1.3 million, with the cost of the project being paid by payments required of developers under the terms of a development agreement to be entered into with the city and the balance through special assessment to be levied against specially benefited properties that have bought or otherwise have direct access to Gulf Road?" The referendum vote was held and passed on April 2nd, 2019. A preliminary resolution declaring intent to levy special assessment number 2019-04 was approved by the common council on April 15th, 2019. Construction of the roundabout and traffic improvements were completed in the summer/fall of 2019, with some punch list items to be finalized in spring of 2020. Now we are finalizing the special assessment with tonight's hearing. There was one update to the special assessment calculations, an oversight on one of the calculations was brought to light for the Kohl's parcel, and in your packets is the updated schedule C. The special assessment was levied against specially benefited properties that have bought or otherwise have direct access to Gulf Road. So again on the map, you can see the assessment district begins just east of State Highway 83, is bordered by I-94 on the south and the city limits on the east. The new development area has brought new traffic to the area. Without the improvements of this project, the additional traffic would degrade safety and operations for the corridor. The improvements as part of this project improved traffic operations, safety, and in turn mobility for the entire corridor. In addition, the special assessment area was a general development plan. All parking, stormwater requirements, signage, and other items are based on the entire development, not each specific business. The improvements of this project benefit the entire development area, not just those properties that have frontage on Gulf Road. In order to assign assessment values, a method for determining how each property benefited from the improvements needed to be determined. It was determined that the most equitable method for the special assessment would be on average daily trips per parcel. In order to determine an average daily amount of trips generated by each tax parcel, the ITE Trip Generation Manual 9th Edition was used. The ITE Trip Generation Manual is the industry standard for determining trip generation rates. The data within the manual is based on different land uses that have been physically studied throughout the nation. The manual combines the study for similar land use types and determine average rates for trips per development based on land use variables. Those variables can vary from building square footage to employees, to number of drive-through lanes, and other items depending on particular land use. The use of the ITE manual and the estimated trip generation is accepted practice for special assessment projects. For most instances, physical trip counts were determined to be impractical because of the type of development and the amount of shared access points. In most instances, the ITE Trip Generation Manual tends to overestimate the amount of trips, and when doing a TIA, reductions for linked trips and pass-by trips are taken. However, in this case, no reductions were taken because similar reductions would be applied to all developments resulting in the same percentages. As an example, the city of Madison has found that utilizing trip generation calculations were the most equitable way to assign improvement costs via special assessment for intersection improvement projects.
One question, Josh. You said there was a update on the calculations, so what was the update and what was the impact of that update? Because that modified the proposed schedule, right? And that's what the -- so what the council is being asked to consider tonight is the revised assessment schedule based on that update. So you better explain, what is the update? What was the impact? Who did it affect? Can you do that?
Yeah. So the update was at the Kohl's parcel, as was mentioned, and initially, there was an error in the average rate. When that rate was corrected, the assessment value for the Kohl's parcel was increased by approximately four times, and then each other parcel was reduced by their percentage share. So approximately additional $33,000 to Kohl's.
So the Kohl's parcel, proposed assessment goes up $33,000 and the others?
Go down, but $33,000 is then divvied between all other tax parcels by their percentage trips.
And what was the error that occurred?
There was an error there. The ITE, there's, so when you have the variables, there's average trip generations, and the wrong number was input into the table and was caught as discussions went on, and then that was corrected. And all other numbers were checked as that was corrected.
It was the wrong number for Kohl's only?
Yes.
And you validated the other businesses?
Yeah, I went through and checked all the equations.
Well, do you have the exact number in that revised schedule?
So the revised schedule is in the council packet. I can find the page number.
Right. I'm sort of, I guess, asking a question for the general public that may not have the revised schedule.
The council members, the revised schedule is on page six of the packet.
Okay. Apologies. So, the new assessment value for Kohl's is $44,173.72.
And it had been $11,816.30. Okay. And then the reduction, and I know we've gotten some correspondence from council for Albrecht's, how did that change, impact the proposed assessment on Albrecht's?
Albrecht's new value is $159,754.56.
Any other questions for S E H? We can go on to.
I have a question. When you're doing these trip estimates, so like for Verizon, you're showing 50, that means you're showing people coming in, 25, people going out, 25, that's considered how you get to the 50, right? So you're suggesting that their volume of traffic is only 25 clients per day?
It was the best estimate, there's not an exact land use for it, so we tried our best to estimate it based on.
I understand, it just seems very inequitable, only you've been paying $1,300 and then Albrecht's paying $156,000. I mean, that doesn't seem very equitable, but that's only because of the trip calculation that you guys make. And it's not an actual physically going out there and doing a survey, it's just from a template or a formula.
Yes, it was determined that just based on the number of access points and the number of shared driveways and shared parking lots, that it had been very difficult to physically spend a day counting where each trip went to, so the national standards.
Okay, so the standard for like a company like Verizon is somewhere in your manual that says this type of establishment typically has this type of volume?
Verizon, they don't have a specific cellphone store in there, so it was an estimated based on reading through some online research, was the best guess.
And keep in mind, Wayne, you know Verizon and a number of the other ones are all part of Ramco, so they all get added together because they're really the same property owner? Great, any other questions for S E H? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, without objection, we'll move into citizens' comments pertaining to this special, this public hearing. Anybody like to come and speak to this public hearing? Come on up. Please speak into the microphone and what we need to start, you guys can sit right here if you like. And just give us your name and address, please.
My name is Michelle Harrington, 515 Pebble Creek Pass, Wales.
Carrie Jean Pierre, 349 Sand Hill Lane, Dousman. We are the owners of Albrecht Foods, Century Dellafield.
That's why I know you.
Yes.
We're there working all the time.
And I'm there shopping all the time.
So it's interesting that you just had this conversation, because the reason we're here is we don't feel that this was a fair and equitable assessment for us, for a number of reasons. One, our traffic, our customer count, we track, and we're substantially, with deliveries, with employees, is less than 4,000. We don't, we are not connected even with the roundabout. We're more than 1,000 feet away, it hasn't helped or hurt our business, and we were rather shocked when we saw Kohl's. I went out there personally on Saturday, we had an event, I counted the cars in Kohl's parking lot, and they had 112, and I didn't even count the employees on the side. We just, we just look at this and we just don't understand it, because we feel we're a family-owned organization, we do a lot for the community, we understand that we have a share in this, but we don't feel it's fair and equitable. This is a hardship on us. I mean, if you look at this, we're not generating 25% of that traffic in that whole area. You look at, I don't know how many businesses are in this whole area, but we also have taken this to an attorney and have with, with all this information, and they feel that we have quite a case, and they have given you a letter, I believe, they emailed you a letter on Friday.
Yeah, it's been shared with our attorney.
So, you know, we just, we need you guys to look at this closely, because this is going to hurt our business tremendously. And I don't know if you know anything about grocery, it's very high volume, very low profit. And we look at Kohl's, and if any of you stand out there on a Saturday, they have at least 100 to 200 people coming through there within a couple hours. And I know it's been adjusted, but.
And then even ask us, all of us, for our customer count, we would have given it to you.
Yeah, Kohl's tracks theirs too.
Everybody does.
And employees, they have a lot of employees. I mean, if you, if you guys have gone out to that mall, I mean, they're an anchor. The reason we came out there is because they were an anchor. But, I mean, 169, now it's 159 or whatever, that is still not fair. I mean, I still, when you were talking about Verizon, I have a hard time thinking they only have 50 people in and 50 people out. I mean, and a lot of people also come to us and then they go along to other people, or either way, but this is just, I mean, jaw-dropping for us. And unfortunately, we have to react to it, because what do we do? Do we, you know, do we cut our employees? Do we raise our prices? That's not fair. And, you know, we just learned that there was supposed to be, an option was a signal, we were never presented that when we met with people.
We would have been told how our number was gonna be exist, we just learned about this, what, 36?
I had an email, Kent, to find out what was going on, and he said, oh, there's a letter. And when we saw, I mean, we have shown this to so many people, and they're like, hey, if we're paying this, what do you think Kohl's is paying? And they have 89,000 square feet, we have 62,000, they pay 138,000 in property taxes, we pay 90. People were unbelievable that what we got hit and what they got hit. We understand, we have to pay something.
Yeah, we totally understand.
But let's be fair here. I don't think this is fair. I would hope some of you would agree with that. If you know anything about that strip mall, if you guys have ever gone there, I don't know if you've ever gone to Kohl's or any of that, but this is not.
We're family-owned.
Yeah.
We're not big Kohl's corporate, we're not Verizon, we live in the community, we support the community, the fireworks.
Everything.
Everything.
The schools you talk to are people.
So maybe we should be cutting all services out of them, I mean, come on.
Have you shared with Kohl's, has Kohl's shared with you what their foot traffic is?
I did.
You said that they count, so.
Yeah, I, yeah, it's all part of your, you know, she came over and talked to me about something totally different yesterday and, or Friday, and I didn't feel like that was, I don't wanna, you know, that's their personal business.
I think we wanted to come here first, but yeah, we know the manager there, we'll call him.
I mean, we could, we could stand out there and track it too. I mean, that parking lot is jammed, and their parking lot's larger than ours, and they have a side parking lot for all their employees. So, I talked to the bank and I said, how does this sit with you? She goes, tell you the truth, I have probably more than 400 in and out, I probably have 500. So you're saying Waukesha State Bank is the same as Kohl's? Now I know you've adjusted it, but it just scares me out of the gate, there's, there's an error? What, has everything really been looked at?
And I agree with Verizon, 25 people in a day? I go in there and there's 25 people in there in an hour. I just think there would have been a better way to calculate this. Like I said, come ask us, we're not gonna lie. And then you'd have some actual numbers.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your comments, I appreciate it.
We're not allowed to interact, yeah. I didn't want you to feel like, why aren't they listening or talking? We can't.
Well, thank you for listening.
Yeah, sounds like it.
Sure, you can share them with the clerk.
I mean, if you wanna, I mean, because we do track it, so we just hope that you guys really look at this closely, because this can be a huge hardship for us, and I would hope you would wanna do that and you'd wanna do it fairly, that's all we ask. And this is, this is, you know, the roundabout, we really weren't interested in it, because it doesn't help our entrances at all.
And it didn't improve our customer count.
No.
Stayed the same. So there was really, and we didn't want it.
Yeah.
And we don't even live in the cities, but we could have voted on it.
Yeah. But now we understand that we're, we're part of it, but let's be fair and equitable, because that, I hope that you guys will look at that as, you know, in deep, because this could hurt us tremendously, because if you think about it, it's gonna be $115,000 or $16,000 almost every year for 10 years.
And that's I know without interest.
What are we gonna, how, what are we gonna cut? What are we gonna have to raise price? That's not fair. Just look at it closer is all we ask, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, Mike or Josh, can you come up here and please answer any questions the council might have? And, you know, my question is, can you, can you please go over the industry, as it's been explained to me, the industry standards that you're using to assure that the council and the public that, that to the best of our ability, we are being fair and equitable, and why you feel that's justified?
Right, I mean, that's, we're using.
Tom is correcting me again, is there anybody else that would like to speak on this topic? I assume they were the only ones, maybe I was wrong in that assumption. Okay.
All right, so, yeah, it is theoretical numbers, they're, they're out of the 9th edition, Josh can speak to a little bit more of that, and that's, it is, this is how these types of assessments are done. So it's industry standard as far as the, you know, calculating the trip counts and applying that across, you know, based on square footage of building and land use.
The square footage of the Kohl's is much larger, so how do you explain that they have less traffic?
So what we did is we looked at, because when we do a roadway design, we looked at.
Just be a little louder, I don't hear well.
Yeah, we, we looked at a weekday daily average number of trips when we looked at it, because that's how, when you design a road. So, the theory is that a grocery store is going to trickle in more people in throughout the day, they'll have longer hours, Kohl's may have more of a peak in the afternoon or something like that, but, you know, you'll see more people coming in throughout the day to a grocery store as a more of a steady flow.
But did you actually, you're, you're just using theory, it just seems to me to sort of defy logic when you're crediting 25% of all the traffic versus. versus Kohl's at not even seven. That's like three times the amount, not, not even just a little difference.
It's definitely based on, on the, the use, right?
Well, it's based on the theoretical use, right?
Yes, the theoretical use.
Not on the actual count.
Yeah, definitely. And it's, that's the, the real, and practical part is to try to get actual counts because of the different access points and trying to determine that.
The Kohl's abuts the, the roundabout. Sorry, I mean, over talking. Kohl's actually is up by the roundabout, so the roundabout changes impact the Kohl's, right?
It's right adjacent.
You didn't make any, yeah.
Yeah.
It's right in the middle of it.
Definitely. Everything's very close to it. It was all part of, originally, when this was developed, it's a GDP, the whole business corridor there was, you know, it was phased in, but it was all part of one development.
Is, excuse me, is municipality size used as a basis at all for this?
The...
Yeah, like Della Field, 7,000 people, and if this was in Waukesha, it's 70,000 people. Are those numbers come into play?
They, so the way they do it is they, they pick different sites. There's not that specific information available, but they do kind of caution you that, you know, there are, it's, it's a variety of sizes, variety of different locations. The trips are based on the number of cars, so for instance, you won't have a New York City grocery store factored into this because people are walking to it. So it's, it's different states throughout the Midwest and throughout the nation. You know, Wisconsin was picked up in it. And they just go through and they take all these points, and again, it's not all one size. It's not all one type of location. It's a variety of things. So that's how you're coming up with this theoretical number. So there's not a perfect descriptor to say that this is exactly this or exactly that.
Within that, that theoretical formula, hours of operation is included?
Yes.
And what's the difference between, what's the difference between, say, a Kohl's hours of operation versus Albrecht's?
It's not, so it's considered in the fact that...
Not that it's considered. What's, what is the actual difference? Is there a difference between hours of operation between the two?
Albrecht's.
I don't want to put you on the spot.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're trying to divide up $650,000 equitably. The formula that you applied, is it the only formula that can be applied to dividing up this, or are there other methods that could be used?
There are other methods as well.
Well, and we did take, like, the area method, which really skewed the numbers and didn't make sense at all.
How did... Skewed you, skewed them how?
It...
I guess one instance is the Gulf Coast Maintenance Facility was then paying more than any of the restaurants, so more than Water Street Brewery just because they have a bigger parcel size. So, you know...
Yeah, where, yeah.
That was one of the big things that jumped off, but it just kind of, kind of downskewed some of the restaurants because they're smaller parcels, but typically you'll see them as bigger generators as well.
So as you looked at these numbers, any of them surprise you?
I guess, can be honest, Kohl's did surprise me a little bit, but...
That it was so low compared to the other ones?
Yeah.
So what can be done about that?
Should we get actual numbers?
I mean, and that's, that's what we're trying to do, is across the board, use, use a method that's been accepted in the past.
Well, this just seems really counterintuitive.
So I'll just make a, make a statement. I don't think, it doesn't jump off the page to me. Now, maybe if you want to look at percentages, that's one thing. But as far as trying to establish a baseline and a relative number of trips per business, I mean, I do go, I do frequent that area quite a bit. And, you know, I'll tell you, I go to Century 10 times more than I go to Kohl's. But I do go to both, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's out of whack that we've got a, and then leveraging an industry standard as a basis for, you know, this type of formula, and, and when it boils out that the number of trips to Century's triple what it is to Kohl's. I, to me, I mean, does that, am I the only one who thinks that that's about what it would be?
I would agree that that...
Certainly the duration of visit is...
Yeah, I would agree. It would be a high utilization. A grocery store would be a higher utilization or frequent trips than a clothing store, which essentially Kohl's is, or a department store.
So if I understand you right, you, you basically take the, the business, and there's a category for that, right? And that category takes into consideration, you know, the type of business, the amount of area that they have, and it, it's, whether that grocery store is sitting in Della Field or sitting in Wales or sitting in Oconomowoc, it's the same number that you're going to use. And when you have other types of retail stores, there's just a different category that associates a different number. And the standard is the same for, for everybody, irregardless of where the location is. And really, the, the main trick is just picking what type of business it is. I mean, is that, when we try to think of it simply, that the, the use, which is the type of business?
Correct, yes. So that's, you know, and some of them clearly are more defined than others. Like Kohl's, there's, it's a department store, you know, so you can go onto it, you read the description, and it fits Kohl's to a T. It's clothing, it's linens, it's items like that, you know, your basic households. Grocery store, again, it's, you know, they sell food, they can sell some, you know, cleaning supplies, stuff like that, which you'd say...
And a Walgreens?
Walgreens, there's a pharmacy.
These are, these descriptors are all based on things that are contained within those businesses.
Pharmacy with a drive-through.
And that's the key, how, what weighting is that one variable, the use of that particular property?
It's hard to say because each one has a different variable that you can then apply it to, to weight it. So, you know, you can look at different information that you have. We use building square footage in all the cases where we could. You can use employees and stuff like that, so the usage rates, you know, the number that you're looking at, the average rate's going to vary depending on your variable.
So when you use this standardized, industry-standard, validated tool, is there any manipulation that you do, any subjective entry that you do to, say, to change that?
The only subjective...
I mean, you have your, your 0 through 10 variables, let's say. Do you, are you weighting them differently than the standardized tool weights them?
Depending on, depending on the business or what it is. So for instance, in that table, we have some strip malls that we located or identified, and we use the fitted curve equation there instead of the average rate. The reason we did that is the different square footages, the curve can kind of change. So when you have two similar land uses, we may not just use the average rate, but we try to use that average rate wherever we can. And the other area where we can manipulate things is, which we did not do in this case, is when you're doing an actual traffic impact analysis, you can do reductions for things like link trips, where somebody may go to Kohl's and Century. You don't double count that trip when you're assigning new trips. And then there's pass-by trips, which is somebody that's already driving down the corridor, says, hey, there's a Kohl's, I want to stop and buy something. So since that person's already there, we don't want to count it. So there's some numbers that you can assign to reduce those that we would do if we were doing raw. So if you looked at the Chick-fil-A, TIA, they would have assigned link trip reductions, pass-by trip reductions, to lower that number. What we didn't want to do here is do that because then you're essentially going to assign, for the most part, the same number, so you're going to come back to that same percentage share. But that's another way, when we're doing just an actual trip generation, that we can kind of look at those numbers and say, okay, let's bring it a little bit more.
So can you apply any, for example, to go through the, to the end of the holiday end, you have to go through the roundabout.
Mm-hmm.
But you don't have to go through the roundabout to get the Century coming in from the east.
Or Best Buy or Famous Land.
Right. Does any, was anything put into the formula to account for that variable?
The proximity to the roundabout, that's actually the question I was going to ask.
No, because it's, as Jim said, and as it says in the, in the document, you know, this was part of a planned unit development originally, right? The traffic study that the city did 10 years ago, it's about the whole area. It's not about who's closest or who's furthest away. It's about the benefit to the area, right?
The proposed benefit. I get you. It's just that we're trying to make sense out of something that doesn't seem to make sense.
Were trip strips, or I don't know what to call them, those cables that go across the road, where they count traffic, was that used at any of this?
We did not use those. The DOT has...
You're aware of what I'm talking about?
Yes, yeah, to count the daily traffic. We did not use those because they'll give you a snapshot of what's going on on the road, but it doesn't tell you where the people are going.
Well, I mean, if you put them in the driveways, it would.
You can, but with the shared-use driveways, again, it's hard to determine whether somebody is necessarily, you know...
But yet we're comfortable with the formula, you know? So could you come up with a percentage of, you know, like, X number of cars coming through this particular driveway would mean a certain percentage would be going to, you know, GNC or Wild Birds Unlimited or whatever else?
You could, but, you know, that gets into more...
I, I don't know that you could. I thought you just said that you couldn't, so now you're saying you could. So, which is...
You could enter from the west and head to Century.
Right.
And enter from the south.
So I'm not saying...
I don't think that's possible.
Yeah, no, and I'm, I'm, alls I was saying is that if you counted each driveway and you wanted to somehow assign a percent that came in that driveway, but what that number would be based on, you know, this is a national standard.
Would be arbitrary.
Yeah, this would be arbitrary.
Yeah, but they're, they're using an arbitrary number.
No, I, no, I don't think that's what they said. They're not saying they use an arbitrary number.
We try, try to do one at a time because it's pretty hard for a court reporter to get. She is, she's good, but not that good.
Fair enough, fair enough.
I don't think she's going to get that. I'm sorry.
So again, could you, I know, I know you introduced it, but it's ITE is the standard, and you mentioned that there's some municipalities near us that have used it or have it as a staple. Is this, is this, this isn't something that you pulled out?
No.
And said this might be a good tool? This is something that's getting done elsewhere?
It is being done elsewhere. It's done, the city of Madison is the biggest one that I could find. They do that when they do intersection improvements. They will assign the value to each property owner based on the number of trips generated.
Okay, and if, if we actually did a, a physical traffic count, it's very possible that what we'd end up with is this scaling up or down based on actual number of cars, but very likely we have the same proportion of visitors to individual stores.
If we could actually measure it.
Yeah, I mean, in other words, if we think that 3,000 visitors in a day is high for Century, turns out that actual car counts, instead of matched their numbers, it's very likely we have counts decreasing in relative proportion to these other businesses as well.
Correct.
Because you said their numbers are a little bit inflated for, to be on the conservative side.
You, you wrote that in your letter, right? That's in our packet about how the numbers generally are overstated for all of these uses as part of the, the database that's used, industry standard. But your point was, as long as they're overstated equally to everyone, it may, it really doesn't make a difference. But it would explain why Century thinks there, has data to show that their number is actually lower.
Correct.
So to answer some of the testimony that was heard in the public hearing, can you address why self-reporting on the number of customers is or is not a valid tool to use?
So I, I haven't seen that being used. I don't know if there, there's others, and I guess it would be then, you know, a trust factor also, you know, as far as making, making sure that is. So I, again, that'd probably be another one hard, harder to defend than having, you know, hey, this is a standard that's been used in the past as far as using the manual and the trip generations.
But correct me if I'm wrong, if I, if I read your report right or hearing your comments. A trip, a customer count would be, you have to double the customer count to get to the trip generation because it would be the customer that enters and the customer that leaves, or am I missing something?
Correct. And remember, each trip is a car, so it doesn't take into account occupancy. So, you know, when you do a customer count, you know, you may have a car going to a certain business that has three people in it. They make three purchases, but they came in the same car, so...
Right. And the whole family doesn't go to Century to get groceries, but they will go to Water Street Brewery to have dinner.
Right.
Curious, if you looked at the, the tax base and what they currently pay each, each of these individual entities, is the percentage of, and if you aggregated that, is there a percentage about equal to what we're asking for, or is it very much different?
So we, we didn't look at that. You know, I, I guess the, the one example that was, you know, I, I don't think it would equate well, but we haven't looked at that.
And why haven't you looked at that? Because that's typically not what's done in these situations?
Right. Again, it's, you know, we're, we're looking at the, the trip count, the estimated trip count.
Can you guys think of any better way to try to make this fair and equitable than what you've presented today?
We think this is the most fair and equitable way to, to assess these, you know, to do the special assessment, and that's why we're proposing it.
So if we don't have any other questions for the SEH team, anything else to discuss, or otherwise we'll be looking for a motion.
One more quick question. Josh, that, the number for Verizon, is that, that was just a subjective estimate that what they have, or...
We looked at some other tables and tried our best to find, you know, as close as it was, and we tried to average it out, and that's kind of the number.
Would it be inappropriate to apply like a retail code to them?
We could, but there's not, you know, as you read each, each development type, you know, that it doesn't really fit into like an electronics store because you're not doing what you do at a Best Buy where you've got all the other stuff. You're more zeroed in on cell phones and that type of stuff, so it's, there's not really, we can go back and take another look, but when we looked through it, there wasn't really a good fitting land use to it.
Because consistent with the testimony in the public hearing, I would say that I don't go in there frequently, but when I do, there seems to always be five employees and 10 customers in there at any point in time, which would lead to a much higher daily count.
Just curious, and I don't know if the question would be to you or to you, Attorney Hammett. Do you have to make these decisions based on a single criteria, or could they be blended? Could other factors be taken into account as long as they're fair across the board and blended with a traffic type of decision?
Well, it has to be done on a reasonable and equitable basis, and then in, in trying to determine that, you have to look at whether there's any unique properties or characteristics. But typically, it's reasonable, and, I mean, that's the standard statement, but reasonable and equitable basis. A lot of times, assessments are done on area.
Yep.
They're done on front footage. This traffic generation account has been upheld by the courts as being a reasonable method of doing it, doing, placing the special assessments. Typically, it's one way or the other. You do one. In this particular situation, the front footage wasn't used because this was a planned unit development where, you know, you have shared parking, you have shared stormwater, all of that signage, and so that's, that, the, the assessment map, as I understand, was based on that, correct, Mike? That's what was the, how it was determined, that what the area was that would benefit by these improvements.
Yeah, the, yes. I mean, that, we looked at the, the whole corridor, Gulf Road corridor, and identified those as a benefited properties.
The only, the only question I had is, again, is on that Kohl's thing, you know, you're taking a department store, but doesn't Kohl's take all the Amazon returns now?
Yes, it does.
And do you have a... Was that... Is that a factor, or how do you... I mean, that might be something different than just a department store?
I would think that would generate a ton of traffic.
I don't know.
Yeah, and I mean, that's not in the, you know, that's a relatively new thing for Kohl's.
It's been there a while, and it's there, certainly there now.
At the time, the National Studies did not include the Amazon drop zone.
Doug, just real quickly to get back to your question. I do know for a fact you can do blended methodologies.
As long as it's fair.
In my past employment, I used to do a lot of utility special assessments. A lot of those, we would do half on per property and half on per lineal footage.
And that's an option to look at here, or are we still...
Yeah, so we can vote, or we can ask them to come back. I mean, we, you know, we have options.
There's some problems here with per front footage because there are some properties that literally have no frontage on Gulf Road, like the county property and the Water Street Brewery.
But it would be an area... It could be an area one, right? The area of the lot with a factor as opposed to front footage. Front footage wouldn't work using this methodology.
Well, it could be valuation. That's how taxes are done today, right? The devaluation of the property could be part of it, and then traffic could be another part of it.
Yeah, but, I mean, we're talking about...
We're trying... We're not saying it couldn't be done, I think, Doug. It's just that we, you know, we need to stick with what industry standards are. You know, so we're consistent in with not only what we decide here, but what our surrounding communities do in similar situations. And since it's a road project, technically, you're looking at traffic. Yeah.
You're trying to pin down actual use and benefit as opposed to... The value of the property, I think, is relatively insignificant.
Well, I was just saying that if you looked at the percentage of taxes paid, once again, in aggregate across all these properties, if one store is 15%, but they're paying 50% of this, that's...
But the goal is utilization, to identify utilization, and then allocate costs based on utilization.
If we had a church that didn't pay any taxes, they would have an incredible amount of traffic, right? And then they'd be special assessed like based on their use.
Right, but, okay, there are generally two methods of levying special assessment. One of them was the assessment has to correlate to increase in benefit or value to the property. That's rarely used. The other method, which is followed here and which everybody does, is known as an assessment based on the police powers. And there, you have to make a determination that there is a benefit to the properties being specially assessed, but that there isn't a direct correlation between the assessment and increase in value. So we're utilizing the police power methodology of this assessment. Virtually every municipality does it that way.
Okay, well, it brings up a point. I mean, if we make the decision based on this proposal, are we open to a potential lawsuit and what, I mean...
Okay, so you can... You're always open to being challenged for any action or decision you make. But with special assessments, if there was a challenge and it's set aside, it doesn't eliminate the assessment. It comes back and you do a different methodology. It doesn't prevent you from redoing the assessment, okay?
It's just, yeah, it's hard to believe that you'd have to add Walgreens, Kohl's, Water Street, Best Buy, and Verizon plus Applebee's and the Holiday Inn Express to equal Century in terms of percentages. That's a lot to me. So that, I mean, I understand why Century objected. Just when I look at it, I go, okay, maybe they do get... I'll give you the grocery store because I think I should have my own parking spot at Century. But, um, but that said, there's a lot of traffic when you add all of these other businesses and they all together, you know, are slightly less than that, 26 or 25%. 24.58, 25%. Just, I don't know.
So we either need to give them some specific instructions on what we'd like them to come back with, otherwise we need... Looking for a motion.
All right, one more question. So, is there a calculation that would tell us a way to associate parking spaces per business at these establishments?
So there's parcels associated with each business that would have parking spaces on there. I'm not sure. I think there's a lot of cross-use of those. And, you know, one specific, the parcel for Water Street Brewery just goes around the building itself, so it doesn't include any parking, so...
Right, but, so on plan commission, when we look at a new business application, we are... There's a parking requirement formula that we use.
So, yeah, we could take a look at that.
And so, and that would be a good indicator, if, I mean, that's what we've used consistently to establish, making sure that they're containing their parking within their sphere of influence, right? If, is there a way, I mean, would it be possible to use that formula and apply it to these individual businesses and get a proportion based on that type of utilization? And see what those numbers bring back? And whether or not it would make sense to use those on their own or blend them with these?
So that can definitely be done. I'm not aware of any precedent of that ever being done for special assessment before. Doesn't mean you can't be the first.
It's not necessarily a direct, you know, because if someone goes there, if it's an insurance agency, they park there and they're there all day, right, and they have occasional customers. So the use is different, but they are actually, you are, at least there's proportion relative to the trips in there someplace.
I'm not sure how do we get that number? They didn't understand it, but...
I mean, we can apply, you know, if it's 250 square feet for parking space or whatever. We can apply, you know, we have the square footage of the buildings and apply it, but...
He's just saying that based on how many parking spots each building is required to have by a code.
Oh, I see. Now, they're actually there. I see, okay.
Yeah, but to Tim's counterpoint, it's also dependent on use, like you said. You could have someone there for eight hours a day versus someone there for 30 minutes.
But I think what we're trying to grasp here, at least from my understanding, is the disparity between what we think Kohl's does and Albrecht, and their square footage is not the same, but they're both two big stores there. And Best Buy, again, and so parking requirement would level off that difference a little bit across all those entities, I would think. Same with, like Verizon was brought up as an example that stood out. They probably do a little bit more than Penzi Spices, right? But...
I wouldn't object to knowing that, yeah. You know, just to get an idea of what that is. But I'm reluctant to go against a standardized, validated predictive tool that's been used across the industry and is, quote, "the gold standard."
Well, we may come back to this eventually, but I'm not willing to support this because I don't think it's fair and equitable. I'd like to look at some other options. I'd like to see some other potential, and if we don't find anything better, then come back to this. But at this point, I'm just letting you know that I would not support it. The reason I say that, sometimes when we vote, we don't hear a discussion, then somebody votes negative, and we don't know why, you know what I'm talking about? So I'm letting you know why I would vote against this, because I'd like to hear other options. I don't think our backs against the wall that we have to do it tonight, do we?
We do not.
That's why I'd like to look and see if there's other options.
If you'd like to hear other options, be very definitive of what you'd like us to come back with. Like, Tim, you might say, do it based on the code requirements for parking, but would you also want one that's a 50-50 blend between that? And we can do multiple options.
Yeah, I would. That's where I was headed with that, is I think that that accounts for, you know, some of the difference that we're seeing here.
So if you're gonna suggest, would you suggest a 50-50 blend of those parking requirements? Then I would also suggest a 25-75 blend of parking requirements and this tool.
25 parking requirements, 75 this tool?
Correct.
I think you have to keep in mind that there's an industry standard, but it isn't always equitable. And things that are equal and equitable are not, it's not the same, you know? And so I think we do need to be a little more nuanced in this assessment. I think it's okay to consider these percentages that came out. They just, it leaps out as, it doesn't make sense, even if it is the gold standard, even if it is what everybody else uses, I think it bears scrutiny and a little more creative approach, as you guys said.
So based on the testimony you've gotten here from SEH, what specifically would you like to see? For both you and Wayne, which seem to have the highest level of concern, because when they come back, we want to make sure that the options you're thinking about that might be more applicable, that they've maybe described before, that we make sure we get the information.
I think we have expressed it. What I'd like to see is maybe a blend of how you calculate this, not just one way. When numbers come out that look kind of wonky, like the Verizon has, you know, .2 of a percent, that doesn't make sense to me, and that should leap out. So maybe logic is along with that formula, you know, so going along that way.
Okay, so you're saying basically exactly what Tim and Mann had asked for?
More or less, yes.
Okay.
I just want to, when you look at the numbers and they come out like that, don't just go, well, that's what the number said. You know, data, data don't really lie, but they only are as good as the method with which we're using.
So to clarify, you want us to take a look, a second look at Verizon?
Well, I want you to look at everything and how we get such low numbers for the likes of Kohl's, Walgreens, and some of the other stores and such massive numbers. Yeah.
I think one common way personally is, real estate taxes are somewhat of a personal thing, right? I mean, the city assesses a property, I dispute that, and that's determined, and I pay it. I would consider taking a look at all these properties. Very simple, right? It's all public, I mean, take a look at each of these bills these people pay on an annual basis and figure out what that percentage is. And 50% comparison of that and 50% comparison of the traffic would also give what I think is a fair measurement.
So Doug, you're saying property taxes are assessed value?
Assessed value.
Right, yes, yeah, exactly. I mean, aggregate of all these...
So 50% assessed value, 50% the ITE trip generation.
It's something to consider. Okay, and Wayne, do any of these meet what you were thinking about, or do you have yet another alternative?
No, I don't have other.
Okay.
So my recommendation is that you simply adjourn the public hearing tonight, if that's what you want, reconvene it so you don't have to renotice it. And you get that information to be made available to the property owners so they'd have an opportunity to come out.
I'll move to adjourn me, the public hearing.
Second.
Public hearing.
Would we want to renotice it?
Discussion?
Well, I'm saying, if you don't want, although you can renotice it if you want to.
This is gonna have a significant impact on a lot of property owners. When some assessments go down, others go up.
Right, well, no, what I'm saying, what I'm suggesting is, they put, those schedules get put together, they get sent to the property owners and, you know, for the adjourned public hearing, so they have them before, just like they had these last schedules. You want to republish, you can. That's entirely...
You're saying the alternative is just send them a letter saying we've developed some more options, and here they are?
At the council's request, they've asked for alternative assessments. Here's what they are. It'll be discussed at reconvene public hearing, which I assume will be next month.
April 2nd.
That sounds good.
So everybody, any other discussion? Yeah, we can't have you speak during this part. We'll have you come up during regular citizens' comments, okay? Okay, great, thanks. Yep.
I just want to recap real quick. What I have is that you were thinking of adjourning the public hearing tonight, and that we are to send letters to the owners with the options of, I've got 50% parking, 50% industry standard ITE trip generation as the first option, 25% parking, 75% industry standard for the second option. I've got 50% industry standard and 50% assessed value calculation. So I have three different types of calculations that you guys want to see at the reconvening of this public hearing in April. That's what I have. I have, actually have a motion from Grimmer and a second from Maples.
There you go.
I just wanted to clarify.
There we go. All right, seeing no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes? Great, thank you. You guys have some more work to do.
Thank you, Mike.
Josh. Okay, now we're gonna move on to item one on the agenda, citizen of Delafield, citizens' comments. So this will be an opportunity to come up and speak to anything on or off the agenda.
A gentleman did one, shouldn't we?
Would anybody like to speak during citizens' comments? We have very few people in the audience tonight, so there's no time limit, but please be respectful.
Good evening. Pam Weedmeyer, 2740 Nagawica Avenue. At the last common council meeting, I read an article that I had written, and that was printed in the Waukesha Freeman on February 19th, 2020. I later found out that I had to express my concerns in a different format to be included in the common council minutes. I will rephrase my newspaper article titled, "Deer Color is Delayed, Fortunately for Delafield Residents." My comments are in regard to Delafield City's Deer Management Plan. I want the common council to know that the deer color machine is a circular device that is installed in a deer feeder, and the deer feeder serves as a baiting station. When the deer places its head in the feeder, a bolt fires into the deer's brain. I want the common council to know that in 2018, the DNR gave the Delafield Deer Management Committee approval to experiment with the deer color device. I want the common council to know that on May 1st, 2019, the DNR Powers-to-Bee took a step back and required additional permitting before approval. I want to remind the common council that the Deer Management Commission sent a letter to you. Included in this letter was the web address deercolor.com with this message. Warning: This video contains graphic images. Viewer discretion advised. I want the council to consider this thought. If you are warned about viewer discretion on a computer screen, what about the rest of us that may accidentally see or hear this in real life? I want the common council to know that Mr. Dean sent an email to the Waukesha Freeman on January 21st, 2020. Following is his quote. If in the future we decide that the use of the device is warranted, we can use the device on public and private land, the committee may decide to move forward with it. But frankly, I believe that I ever need request to use the device, the DNR would easily grant us permission. I want the common council to hear this quote from the deer color website, deercolor.com. Its owners and directors accept no responsibility for injured animals or people, and we know what this means. In conclusion, I would like you to consider not approving the purchase of a deer color machine. According to Mr. Dean's January 21st, 2020 statement, the committee may decide to move forward with it, both on public and private land. I don't want anyone to have to accidentally hear or see this. Thank you.
Great, thank you for your comments. Come on up, Dorf.
I do have copies of my article, if anyone would be interested in taking them home, both in the Freeman and, I'll link them for you. And this is a copy of what I just verbally said, verbatim.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, name and address?
My name is Greg Dorf. D as in David. I was an Oscar.
If you could please speak in the microphone, so they can hear you on TV.
Okay, sorry. Not used to talking into a mic. My name is Greg Dorf. I live at 224 Muir Valley Road. My front yard butts right up to the conservancy. So speak of wildlife, I see tons of it there. But, and I used to live in the town of Brookfield. I moved out here three years ago with my wife and daughter. And I've been using the Waukesha County Nature Trail to get around because I don't drive anymore. I used to drive all over the place, but I don't due to some medical conditions that I developed. So I walk. It's the way I get around now. Now, walking on the trail in the wintertime, it's scary, very, very dangerous. I did call Waukesha County and talk to them about who was responsible for the trail, and they did say there was a section of it that was responsible for, for the, the section of the trail that comes up to downtown Delphill. And specifically, you know, it covers sidewalk and then up to Bleecker Street, but then Bleecker Street to where the trail picks up, it's all snow, and when it melts, it's ice. Definitely not a safe place to be walking, and I walk on that trail, that's how I get around. I walk over to Walgreens and I walk, you know, I walked here tonight. I love walking on the trail. It's, it's a nice trail, as long as it's clear. Tonight it wasn't bad, because it melted. And when it gets sun, it does melt off, but the last three months has been crazy. Anytime it snowed, it didn't get cleared. It, you know, never specifically got cleared on the trail, and the trail actually cuts across where it turns into grass and it goes across my driveway, right on Muir Valley. And so I see the, I see all the people that come on it and that cut across to go, you know, to the south. So my proposal, and I had stopped in and talked to our, our mayor, was that I was looking to see if we could have it at least plowed by Public Works. I've seen they do it on the sidewalks in downtown, over where Kohl's is and US Cellular's over there, and Verizon's over there, and then Albrecht's, that if you're walking to, on the trail, there gets, there's certain points over the winter where it's very unsafe. Now, when I was walking on it in the summer and in this, where there was no bad weather, I found that there were a lot of people that were riding bicycles on it. Now, are they going to be riding bicycles with snow on it? Probably not, because when you cross it without, cross a street without it being plowed, it's pretty dangerous. So my suggestion to our mayor was, is there any way we can get the path cleared, so it's safer? Because it's not safe at all when it's covered with snow. It's, it's, it's scary to be walking on it. But for me, it's the only way I get around. My wife works full-time, and my youngest daughter is off in college, so, you know, I'm at home. Let's see, I'm going to run up to Walgreens, I take the trail, but if I'm coming downtown, I mean, I'll get dropped off at Bee Fitness and work out and then walk home, because that's what I can do at this point. So I was proposing that we include the plowing of that path as a requirement for Department of Public Works to take care of, just like they do, or whoever does downtown, you know, where Verizon is and where Albrecht's is, as, you know, though, all the businesses in the, the town area, that I'd like to see it safer, especially once we get snow, and I don't know if we're going to still get snow this week. I was hoping snow was gone.
All right.
And it's not wood, but that was one of the things I wanted to bring up, was to see if we could get the, the nature trail plowed in the wintertime, because the last three months, it was, it was hairy.
Sounds great, well, thank you very much for your comments, we appreciate them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens that would like to speak? Come on up, Laura.
Laura Schult, 935 Barrow. I have a question first, and it's, in the unfinished bid business item fee, is this going to be coming to the Plan Commission? Because if it is, I won't speak. Has to do with the Sunset View Road?
No.
Yes, it would, actually.
It would, okay.
Okay, then I, I think I'll wait.
If, if it ends up the city selling a parcel of a property, that does need to go to Plan Commission?
Well, maybe, I can speak to it, though, as a citizen, so I will. I know Sunset View, because I live in that area. Sunset View was paved, I moved here in August of 73. It was, it had just been paved, and after they, they put in the road, they found out that the plows could neither go up it or white-knuckled down it. So it was not used, and has not been used for over 40 years. Right now, if you wanted to go up it, there's, there are big logs across the road, so it discourages people from going up and down it. You might go down it, but even then, it's a little scary. Going up, it's like the streets of San Francisco are worse because of the grade. So I'm not quite understanding why we want a pedestrian path there, because I know of nobody in my area who walks it. So that's kind of my comments to this, is I would like to better understand why, why, why we want a pedestrian access. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens like to speak during citizens' comments? Any other citizens like to speak during citizens' comments?
Hello, everyone, Steve Breeden, 2019 Hillside Court. One of the things that, my wife and I, we live in a subdivision just off of 83 and west, west of 83, kind of a dead-end area, about 38 homes back there, heavily wooded. Right now, there's a, there's a number of people that walk, like to get around, and right now, we're unable to get from that subdivision west to Indian Springs and then to downtown, okay? And vice versa. Right now, in that area, the south side, southeast side of Delphill, there is, there's no ability for anyone who's, wants to walk from downtown Delphill to Indian Springs, up the hill, and then go over to the movie cinemas, Home Depot, any of that area. And at one time, like the lady who just gave a discussion, there was the road there that people, when we first moved there in 2011, we used to take that road down, we could walk down to Indian Springs and then get down to downtown, or we could take our bikes, you have to walk it carefully, obviously, and get there. But one of the things that, discussions we've had with our, our friends and neighbors, everyone was talking about, why can't we get to the other part of town? We're stuck, okay? You can't, you can't get, take 83, you can't go underneath the freeway, you can't get to that area, so you can't take, really take a bike safely, you can't walk that way. So we can't go west, and the people on the west side can't go east. So what we're asking for, what we'd asked is if there's some ways of easement, or is there some way that we can, we're not asking for a road. We don't want to, at least the people, the neighbors that I talked to do not want a road going down, but if there's some type of path, either wood chips or something, that would have an easement, that we'd have the right to walk down that way, so it'd be a path, it'd be, be good for the city of Delphill, I think, to have the complete circular type thing, so people can get from both sides. And we have a lot of hikers and people that like to take bikes, and we're kind of, you know, can't get anywhere. So that was the purpose. We had, we've been talking about that for years, we brought it up, I think, with the City Engineering Department at one time, to look into the Hillside Court, which is, I think, Sunset View, which leads down, and that's been a real trouble point for the people that live up there about getting down. We talked to the neighbors that live right there, and there's been a lot of discussions over the years about why, why people can't even walk down that road. So it came up, I understand there is some development coming up, where there's two pieces, parcels of land that they may be developing. And then the question was, if that was going in, is there some way we can rein something so we could have, again, a path? We're not looking for a street or anything like that, we don't want cars or autos, these are people I talked to, but just a path to walk or to bike, simple as that. It would help the whole city, not just us. People on the west side would be able to come to the east side and vice versa.
Great.
That's, that's it.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. Are there any other citizens' comments? Any other citizens' comments? Seeing?
I'd like to make a comment on his topic.
Okay, real quick. Real quick.
Real quick.
Usually don't let people go twice.
Okay.
Real quick.
All right, I agree to get a path, like, if you've ever walked along Highway 83 to get to the other side of the freeway, it's scary, especially when there's snow on the ground.
Okay.
So I would.
So you like that idea too?
Yeah, we, we need, I, we need a path to go from the north.
Good work, I'm going to study that.
Got it, thank you. All right, seeing no other citizens' comments, citizens' comments are now closed. Around to item two, consent agenda. Items listed on the consent agenda are considered in one motion unless a common council member requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda. Is there a motion for the common council minutes?
I will move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, item three, committee reports. Licenses.
We have a discussion on a possible action on temporary Class B retailers license for St. John's Northwestern Military Academy for their Excalibur to be held on April 25th of this year.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, item 3B, Planning Commission, Mr. Iker.
All right, we've got one piece of business here, and that is for the Holiday Inn Express. Because they have a update to their building, we need to update their conditional use based on how it was all put together. And one neat thing, we, Plan Commission gets accused of being too picky sometimes, but it was noted that with the added traffic with Chick-fil-A in it, that the dumpster was going to be highlighted back there, and we asked them to, to shield it for us, please. And so that's us being picky and them, them obliging us, so that's nice. But I will make a motion to approve the amended specific implementation plan for Holiday Inn Express. I think that's it, right? Yes, that's it.
Great. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes.
And the other thing, into this month, I'd expect, watch the, watch the, the packet when it comes out for the agenda, but if everything, if we get information, we'll see Hendricks back on the agenda for the 705 Tennessee Street project, and that would be it.
Sounds great, thank you. Okay, 3C, Lake Welfare Committee, Mr. Maples?
There was a meeting on March 11th, the Sewer PAC survey, there's nothing really new to report, it's waiting for a DNR review. The Welcome to the Lake program was discussed, packets were handed out to provide to new lake property owners, and I think there was around 12 or 13 that were handed out.
So is that, is that ready to go?
Yes.
That's a go, it's done?
It is a go.
Right, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
I'm really glad the committee came up with that.
I liked it too.
The last thing I have is US Coast Guard Auxiliary Boating Education Course. There's two remaining sessions. One is April 4th from, and these are on Saturdays, April 4th from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. That's located at North Shore Middle School in Heartland. And the last one is May 2nd, which is at the Pewaki Lake Yacht Club in Pewaki. Check the Lake Welfare Committee website for registration specifics, I think it's $43 to take the course. Next meeting is April 8th at 6:00 PM.
Great, thank you very much. Park and Rec, Mr. Grimmer?
No meeting, no report.
There you go. Okay, 3E, Public Works, Mr. Dean?
I'm referring to our Public Works, starting first to give information about our meeting.
Yeah, so Public Works met on March 4th. On the agenda, they went over the drainage calculations involving the Nagawica Road Path Project. There was discussion about the comprehensive pedestrian and bicycle accommodation plan, and that has been put on hold temporarily, pending, they want to wait for the Park and Rec Commission to complete their update of the five-year Park and Rec Plan, which includes their trail plan. And also, they reviewed a, a similar plan that SEH had put together for another community about 10 years ago. That, that plan had cost $50,000, our budget is $25,000, and the Public Works Committee asked staff to review grant opportunities that we could use to potentially leverage our funds and complete a larger study. They went over the project at 705 Tennessee Street, and that project will come back to Public Works on April 1st.
No foolin'.
What's that?
I said, no foolin'.
Yeah.
Just a bad pun, sorry.
And then we went through, we had three different bids come in in February. The first one, they decided to take no action for now on the Nagawica Road Path Project. Those bids came in substantially over budget, so they wanted to give our city engineers some time to work with contractors, understand why the bids came in the way they did, and they will make a recommendation at their next meeting. And then there's two action items on tonight's agenda, both related to bids.
Let me go, I'd like to make the motion to approve the construction contract, paying in Dolan the amount of $427,552.13 for the 2020 street improvement program, as recommended by Public Works. I will second.
All right, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes.
And was there any other additional information?
Wayne, we can't hear you.
Were there any other additional information provided about the second?
Still can't hear you.
So there we go.
There you go.
Anything you need to give before I make a motion on the second item?
Nope.
Okay. So the second item was to award the contract to Property Solutions an amount of $44,620 for the Golf Road Roundabout Landscape Project, as recommended by the common, by the Public Works. This was, if you remember, this was additional that we hadn't finished last time, we're taking, this is out of the money out of the tree fund, if I remember right correctly.
Correct.
So that's my motion.
Wasn't that budgeted for $50,000 originally?
It was over 50, this is about $10,000.
Yeah, that's right.
And the road construction was $80,000 under. All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes.
Just two more things I want to hit on real quickly. The Public Works Committee considered a request for the installation of speed bumps on Oakwood Drive, and they recommended against installing speed bumps anywhere in the city. They didn't feel that that was an appropriate traffic calming measure in the Midwest climate, but they did say that they would entertain other traffic calming measures the next time that Oakwood Drive comes up for repaving. And then lastly, the county, Waukesha County, had a request in to put in a crosswalk across Mariner Drive to their campground at Nagawaki Park, and that was approved with the county being fully responsible for the installation and the signage involved with that.
Cool.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, item 3F, Delhart Commission, Mr. Iker?
Delhart does not have a meeting until maybe May now. We canceled one tomorrow night due to lack of business, but not because we're not busy. The, that $3.5 million-ish plant upgrade is underway, and so there's been a couple change orders that are coming out in the wash. But, so that is happening, it's a little bit behind schedule due to some equipment delays, but that's all going to happen this year. So if you're interested in anything about Delhart, you have to wait till May for next meeting. That would be it.
Great, thank you. Police Commission, Mr. Sloga?
Yeah, there has not been a, a meeting to report, the next one has now been canceled, rescheduled for April 30th.
Great, thank you very much. Library Board, Ms. Valdi?
Yeah, the Library Board met last week, last Tuesday, and you'll be able to see the minutes for that. I wanted to focus on a decision that the library made, our director in consultation with the Library Board President Andrea Shredneck, that they, in the interest of flattening the curve, the library closed as of 6 o'clock this evening, there'll be no deliveries. the curve, the library closed as of 6 o'clock this evening, there'll be no deliveries taken, no fines, so if you're holding on to a book, it's your lucky day. No fines will be assessed for patrons, as with other measures the library has taken. It's not an easy decision, but I wanted to express my full support. We have an amazing librarian and library director and all the folks that work there, and just hang in there.
Okay, great, thank you for the update. Three I, Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Bernd, he's not here, I don't believe they had a meeting. Three J, Promotion and Tourism Commission, Mr. Sloga.
Yeah, there was a meeting last Tuesday, I was not able to attend, I refer you to the minutes.
Great. Okay, three K, Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission, no meeting that I'm aware of. If so, I would refer you to the minutes. Three L, Lake Country Fire Board, Mr. Grimmer.
No more, no board meeting, but I will give you an update on Lake Country Fire and Rescue preparations for COVID-19. I've had conversations with fire chief periodically over the last several weeks. Just to alert the public to their preparedness, Waukesha County has a supply of personal protective equipment, PPE, as it's referred to, which first responders can get as needed. The fire chief has been in contact with the Waukesha County Department of Public Health. They've gone through their PPE training, which instructs how to DON and DOF, that personal protective equipment. They've implemented a screening tool for 911 calls, so people suffering symptoms related to COVID-19 are identified prior to first responders going out. Lake Country Fire and Rescue has canceled all their public events, like many other institution have. And right now, Waukesha County has three cases of COVID-19, according to the Wisconsin Department of Health, and that number is widely expected to increase with 47 throughout the state.
Great, thank you for the update. Okay, Mr. Grimmer, Tree Board.
No meeting, no report.
All right, Mr. Dean, dear management.
No meeting, no report.
Great. Okay, item number four, unfinished business. Discussion on possible action regarding the lease between the City of Delfield and the Delfield American Legion. The Park and Rec Commission recommended termination of the lease at their August 26th meeting. Item was postponed on September 16th, 2019, and October 7th, 2019, common council meetings. And then I believe we should continue on to say that we were asked to meet back and have further discussion on this in March. So, if the American Legion guys would like to come on up? So, you know, we've, just a summary, that we've been having some discussions, I have a memo in the packet that talks about the different meetings that we've had over the last three, four, or five months. We've talked about their parking lot, we've talked about trying to find a way that we can work with the Legion to transition, as the Park and Rec Committee has asked, in a fair and equitable way, that helps to take out, you know, helps ease some of the changes that the Legion would have to do, has to manage from a class cash flow perspective. And I thought it was really important to have these guys come here and just once again share with you the value that the American Legion brings to the City of Delfield and all our citizens.
Thank you very much. George Gunlock, I'm the Vice Commander of the American Legion Post 196. I wanted to basically thank you all for allowing us this time to come back. We have taken a good, hard look at what we've done over the time periods and what we want to do moving forward. And as our charter from 1923 still states, we are here to help the community and to help our brothers and sisters, not only veterans, but the surrounding communities as well. And we still like to let you know that we are having difficulties as far as making commitments, so we're always looking for funds, and this would be an extra hardship to the American Legion on something that hasn't been counted on in our budget for the next three years, to have that taken away from us. Other than that, I believe everything else we have discussed prior to this, you know our feelings on it, no matter what the outcome is, we're not going away. We're still going to be here, we're going to take care of our veterans, our brothers, our sisters, we're going to take care of the Scouts, and we're going to take care of the community. And if anybody has any questions for us, we'd like to hear them.
George, could you go through the activities that the Legion sponsors puts on, i.e. the Fourth of July Parade, the car show, I believe it is?
Absolutely. So, so basically, in a nutshell, starting at the beginning of the year, we start the year off with the Coon Feed. We are proud to say this will be our 95th year of a Coon Feed. Something that started off as a necessity of how can we do something for the community, and it has grown from there. The proceeds from that Coon Feed actually was going towards the baseball and these different groups that we have at our league back then. After that, we have a number of different events. We have the Fourth of July Parade, which we put on every year, and we are very proud of doing that. We have, we now call the Lucky Duck Race, where we are, right, as the committee well knows, running ducks down the river for, for that, as well as, Ward, can you?
Well, we used to do the Easter egg hunt until too many mothers got frustrated. I'll be polite. Oh, man.
The car, the car show, I mean, there's, there's lots of stuff. And basically, everything that comes in from this basically comes through us, gets counted, and goes back out to the community.
And the Fourth of July Parade, how do you, people that are registered on the parade, pay the Legion? How does that work? How does the finances of that work? Do you charge the city for that event?
No, actually, the city...
I'm always out of town.
Right, actually, the city charges us for it, so...
Not anymore.
Not anymore. Excellent, thank you very, I appreciate that. So, so it's not a fundraising thing at that point, basically, it's the community coming together.
But you don't charge the city for it?
Correct.
And you don't see any revenue from it?
No.
Right, and that, what's the ice cream stand up here?
Holy cow.
Holy cow. Yeah, Holy Cow donates all the ice cream for it. Sentry, I believe, donates all the hot dogs, right?
Correct.
They're gone.
And...
And disposal also.
All of that disposal.
Yeah, so again, it's donations by the community to help, support the community, show that we're here.
Okay, thank you.
And then all of the honor guard things that you do and participation, would, please go over that as well.
Definitely.
The, the head of our honor guard is actually sitting back there, he could, I'd better refer to how many funerals and how many things we participate in than I could. He's the guy that runs it for us, does a fantastic job, he, I'm sure...
It's another benefit you bring to the community.
Correct. And basically, if you're not aware of what that is, when a veteran passes, we are contacted by the state, or sometimes the family, or within time, our own family, to come out and pay honors to that person who has fallen. And that's something that we do 365 days a year, and it can be a blizzard out, if the funeral's going, we're going to get there some way, shape, or form. If it's 110 degrees, you're going to see gentlemen out there that are well-retired, standing proud, representing everybody, and that is something that we are here to do.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So, my position hasn't changed much from a year ago. I still believe that the city shouldn't be subsidizing local charities regardless of whether it is the American Legion, or Lake Country Women, or whatever the not-for-profit is. Having said that, I don't think, I mean, I'm looking for, I mean, part of the recommend, part of the suggestion was that if we ended this contract, we would continue to, with, there's a possibility we would continue to what? Plow the lots?
Yeah, so if we ended the contract, vote tendered tonight, which the motion that I've suggested in here, the Legion is in full agreement with, and they consider that a reasonable parting of ways, and gives them some time to try to figure out how to replace this lost revenue, right? I mean, they, they have counted on that money for a long time, right? So, basically, we would end the agreement, we would follow the agreement and provide the services of cutting the grass, and basically, that's it through the end of the year. The contract says we have to do everything, but they're willing to take care of the field itself, line the field, drag the field, do those types of things. We would still have to be, to manage the bathrooms and things like that, which is per the contract, but that would end on December 31st, 2020. And from that point forward, we wouldn't be responsible for those items. The two exceptions that the Legion would like us to continue to do is, one, plow the parking lot that's there.
Perpetuity forever?
Well, until the council decide, a future council decides they don't want to do it any longer. So, no, not until perpetuity, but until the council decides that's not what they want to do. And the second thing is the utility bill, which is $450 capped, can never be more than that. There was an incident last year where a pipe broke or something, and they ended up having to pay $400 or $500 over that number because of some mishap, right? But if we vote to end the agreement, continue to plow the driveway, which by the way, our garbage company uses to stage many of the trucks and things when they're working in that area. So, if, you know, the city's kind of using it still, even without this agreement to some extent, is what I, you know, my understanding from, from the, from the folks at the, at the Legion, and then the utility bill. That's the motion that...
I like it.
I think is a reasonable compromise.
I think it's a very reasonable compromise. I didn't, I feel like a contract is a contract, but I understand, and it feels like adults worked it out, and I don't have a problem with the plowing, I think, with all we get for all the services, and I do that Fourth of July Parade every year. I love judging the bikes, I think it's an amazing event, and all the things that you do, I think it's a fair exchange. The ride's worth the fare.
So, when the agreement ends, that's about $850, $8,500 that we pay in the lease payment, and then Tom can maybe give a better estimate, but it's at least $4,000 or $5,000, I believe, from the, from Public Works Department that we will no longer be spending. So, it's a significant amount of money that is shifting.
I just want to clarify one thing, Ken, you mentioned $450 for the sewer bill, it's actually $650 is what's in the contract.
Yeah, we agreed at $450.
Okay.
As a cap.
Has this been run by Public Work, I mean, Park and Rec? This agreement?
Not this revision.
Shouldn't it? Shouldn't it go to Park and Rec is what the other solution would be?
They want to kill it.
Yeah, my, my, they made a recommendation of the council that we end the agreement, and the council asked basically the mayor to go, we weren't really ready to do that at the time.
Right.
Please go try to work something out, and this is what the mayor and the Legion have worked out as reasonable.
And Park and Rec's impetus was because the fields were not being utilized?
Right.
Not necessarily a consideration of the value added that the Legion brings to the city.
So, so the Park and Rec's basic request to end the agreement with agreeing with this motion performs what they've asked to have done.
And Wayne, there's not time for this to go back to Park and Rec and come back to council and still be able to...
Meet the deadline.
...terminate the lease in time for it to be effective 2021.
Wayne, I think it's doing what the Parks and Rec wants to.
Right.
Not completely.
Well, what are the savings, Wayne, besides the $8, $8,500? Your estimate on cost savings through DPW of not performing things is $5,000 to $6,000?
So, my recollection, last time we talked about this, include, inclusive of the lease payment of around $8,500, the total cost per year for, to the city was around $12,000 or $13,000 plus labor.
So, I'll make a motion to end the agreement with the American Legion, with the exception of plowing their parking lot and a utility payment not to exceed $450.
I'll second.
Is there discussion? All in favor?
Lawn care, was that included until the end of the year too, or?
Yeah, so for this year, we'll cut the grass, which is per the agreement.
Is this the patricor?
But starting 2000, you know, January 1st, we will no longer cut the grass.
Just one clarifying thing, you mentioned that the Legion would take care of the ball fields.
This year.
So, who's cutting the grass up the ball fields?
The city's cutting the grass.
Okay.
Wherever the grass is.
Got it.
Just so we're clear, just so everything's clear, I have, I've talked to the Park and Rec many times now, I've secured use of, people are using the diamond also this coming summer. I have teams using it almost every day, and that's why I needed permission from the Park and Rec and the DPW to get the bases and the chalk and all that stuff. So, I've been... And Ward, this is a great example of you guys taking the initiative and actually getting ball players and generating revenue on that field.
They've already scheduled...
Instead of relying on, on government to do it for you.
Exactly. They've already scheduled teams to, and utilized to help drive revenue towards the club.
So, that's, so when you say we're going to utilize, we'll take care of it, it would means is we'll chalk it, we'll put the bases out. As long as you get, please cut the grass rest of 2020.
We will.
Basically, give us a year to secure a lawn service, is what it comes down to.
Sure.
Yeah.
We're still in discussion, right?
Yeah.
I'm sure I have a question for you, maybe. Didn't we at one time still have payment due from them for some park fees? Didn't they, for some of the baseball...
I have to go back and look at that, it's been a while.
Did we have fees that were still due?
I believe it was resolved, I know what you're talking about.
That's what I'm asking. Was it resolved?
I believe those were resolved.
I can get a receipt copy for you, if you'd like me to go back and look it up.
Eventually, yes.
To my understanding, I believe it, and I believe I remember what he's talking about, and I'm not, I wasn't involved with it back then, sort of, I was a member of the Legion, and I remember dealing with this, but I believe they were, just the word I'm looking for here. We're not going to ever collect the money, so they squashed, just dropped it.
Sounded better when I said resolved.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions, passes. Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for being part of the City of Delfield.
See you at the Fourth of July.
Yes. Okay, 4D, discussion on possible action regarding revised proposal from Jeff Tigum for the city to sell the northern leg of Sunset View Drive at a nominal cost in exchange for pedestrian access easement that would result in the pedestrian connectivity between Hillside Drive and Indian Spring Drive with no cost share from the city.
So, you're just looking for permission?
Well, this is really permission to sell a small sliver of city property. There's still some i's to dot and t's to cross. There are some issues with the proposal that would result in a flag lot that I need to get resolved with the city planner as to whether it's accomplishable, otherwise we can do an easement instead of property acquisition of a different property. But then there is a process that Attorney Hamis made me aware of, that to sell this property does need to go through Plan Commission. So, this is really just asking the council for approval to sell the small leg of Sunset View Drive at a nominal fee of like a dollar in exchange for access rights through the neighboring property to accomplish access from Hillside Drive to Indian Spring Drive.
This would still be a private road, not public?
Correct.
I'm sorry, a private what?
Well, it's a private road now, it's not real, we don't, we own the land, but the road itself, we're not responsible for plowing and maintaining.
Oh, gosh.
And I want to make sure it stays that way.
Correct.
Yeah.
And they're, they're talking about getting access from Hillside Drive, right?
Correct.
So, it's going to be a private drive from the end of that cul-de-sac?
Correct.
Yes.
And that serves both houses, and there's no motorized traffic up Sunset?
Correct.
You can get motorized traffic up Sunset, it's very rough.
It's not regular.
Probably not achievable during the winter because of steepness.
And, right, and the, because the flag lot thing is, it could, I mean, that, that sounds like an issue.
We'll go through all that at Planning Commission.
I know, I know, but these lots exist right now, and they've got street frontage, just bringing it into a...
Right, they're trapped.
There's no street frontage.
Well, the Sunset View is a street.
Sunset View was a private property, and in 1987, the city acquired it just by default due to unpaid tax taxes. And it's not a street, it's not a right way.
We have this conversation.
It's a parcel of land with a tax key number. Tell me how such a narrow parcel of land became a parcel of land?
I don't know.
It did, it has a tax key number.
I think, I think this... I think, I think this sounds like a win for everybody.
So that parcel you're talking about for the dollar, is that narrow stretch of what used to be that?
Correct. The northern leg.
So really no value to the land?
No.
There is no cost to the city.
The city never wanted it.
Can't have an auction to the highest price. Just kidding.
All in favor of motion?
Yeah, well, I'll make a motion to negotiate with selling the land on Sunset View.
Second. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes? Great, okay, so now we're on to 5, 5 Mayor's Report. I just want to give a brief update on what the city's doing about the COVID-19 virus. You know, very late-breaking news that the library is now going to be closed as of the end of today, which Ms. Falady went over. But what we're doing, we've worked with the cleaning staff, and we're doing more frequent cleanings in the City Hall. We've made some changes to how we're doing our chairs set up, trying to manage, you know, three to six-foot distances for people. So we're just using common sense for the most part and cleaning things more regularly and asking people that if you're ill and displaying the types of symptoms that you are all over the CDC website, please do not come into City Hall and make us a situation where our employees would be affected. Please give us a call. Try to work with us or contact us in some other way. But any general questions to what the city's doing? Tom's going to go into some HR questions, but are you all comfortable with what the city's doing or have suggestions?
Just the April 7 elections, right? They're still as planned, as location, everything?
Yeah, Michelle's going to talk about that, but. Great, end of my report. Okay, 6A, discussion possible action to allow the city clerk to approve operator bartender licenses at the city after police background check has been completed.
This makes tons of sense to me. I'll move to allow that to occur as proposed.
Second. Great, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes? 6B, discussion possible action regarding the payment of the city employees in case of disruption of the normal work schedule due to the COVID-19 virus pandemic, including school closures requiring employees to stay at home with their children, possible quarantine and/or possible closure of the City Hall if determined to be appropriate in the, in the future. This all boils down to one question.
Yes, what I'm asking the council to consider is whether we would allow the use of sick time for employees that are healthy but can't be here for various COVID-19 reasons, whether that's they've been told to self-quarantine because of potential exposure, they need to stay home because their kids are, that school is closed, or in the event that we here at City Hall are forced to close.
And share with them the policy of how this is different, right? That they have to give a doctor's notice and things like that.
Well, right now, you can only use sick leave if you're sick or if one of your dependents is sick and you stay careful.
Right, and if it's more than three days.
And you need a doctor's note every two days.
More than two days, yep.
So we're asking to, would you consider waiving that policy so that they can use, be more flexible with their use of the sick pay?
Is anybody able to work from home?
A few people right now.
It's a little hard to, yeah, for some.
Well, I mean, the schools, you know, the kids now have to do virtual online.
I know, I work in school.
So those types of things we're working on, Kevin?
Just, just a general question.
And obviously, some of our clerks could possibly do that, right? A little more difficult for our public works guys, right?
I would, I would hope we would.
Public works is also essential services, so there's a little bit of a different component to that as well.
I think Kevin's question is a good one in that, you know, if people can do some work and complete some stuff at home, please, yes. But I think too, we would want to behave rationally and compassionately and supportively. And, you know, not make people more stressed by not getting paid, you know? So, yeah, I think we should.
And forcing people to come to work when they shouldn't be coming to work.
Is that the direction you needed, Tom?
You know, this is an official policy of the city, and so if you're authorizing staff to provide some flexibility with this use of sick leave, I think it should be made as in the form of a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Could I get a clarification on that?
What was the motion?
Again, what I'm asking is for, to allow the use of sick leave for any employees that can't come to work for any COVID-19 reasons.
For the remainder of 2020?
Until further notice with the COVID-19 pandemic.
They're saying August now.
Until.
Till the crisis abates.
Until further notice, COVID-19 pandemic.
I'll so move on that motion at the discretion of the city administrator.
Kevin, you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes? Okay, number seven, report of city officials, Mr. Administrator.
Yeah, two quick, quick things. The vacant finance officer treasurer position is being advertised, and actually tomorrow is the last day to get some mittles in for, to ensure consideration with the first round of interviews. Disappointingly, we've only received one application so far, but on the positive side, it is a strong application that I was pretty pleased to see. So.
Good, only takes one.
It does only take one, yeah. So we'll see how that goes. As a treasurer, that is an appointed position that is confirmed by the Common Council. So for sure, Kent will be sitting in on those interviews, and I'm still figuring out how that process will go. The other thing I just want to mention tonight is we are moving forward with our budget development already for 2021. A major development is that the state legislator, and it was signed by the governor, has provided some flexibility on when referendum questions can go on the ballot. We could put it on an August ballot this year. In order to do so, we need, we would need to approve a question by May. And so I'm going to be coming to you in April with a rough draft of where our budget sits. So I just want to make you aware of that.
Thank you.
But not a referendum, but not a, you might ask for.
That would come in May.
Okay, April is a rough draft of the budget. May would be a referendum.
Correct. And that's it for my report.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, council request for future agenda items.
Oh, no.
Hold on, Miss Hart. Oh, I'm sorry, clerk.
Discussion and action on the voucher list, please.
Move to approve the voucher list.
Second.
I have one question.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
We have an $1,800 item in there for Naval Surface Warfare Center. Anybody know what that is?
I'll have to get back to you on that.
Send an email out, I'm interested. It'll sound really fun.
That's the mayor's question.
I will send an email out to everybody on that one.
Got delivered to the American Legion.
Brought that up a couple months ago. I was told that it was a software. Do you remember that? Oh, I brought that up.
I don't know what this is.
Yeah, I thought that that's.
I'll send an email out tomorrow.
It was a software program.
And then the second item that I have is just an update regarding the spring election and, I'm sorry, yes.
I think we voted.
I think we did.
Oh, discussion in action, we need to.
Someone motioned second if we did.
We did, I didn't hear it, okay. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes?
All right, so the second item is an update regarding the spring election and presidential preference primary on April 7 of 2020. The church has informed us that as of Sunday, they are closed, so we will be holding the election in this room at the Common Council chambers at 500 Genesee Street on April 7 from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. Going to put it in the papers on probably a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday now until the election. I'm going to post it on all the doors and on our website and social media. Also going to ask some of the businesses that are going to remain open around the area, specifically grocery stores and things like Walgreens, if they can post it on their doors. And if everybody can just let other members of the community know that we will be holding it here. It is going to be cramped. We do have parking in the back and most notably in the front of the building, so.
Cozy.
It is going to be cozy.
We're going to sign and add Christ the King so that they don't like to send people?
There's going to be people at Christ the King. Christ the King is also going to put it out on their big board out front. They're going to put a couple signs out there, but most of the signs are going to be pointing towards this building here. So also of note, we are not entering the care facility for absentee voting. We took the governor's executive order. We communicated with the care facility, and all those ballots were mailed out today. So the care facility residents are only going to be able to do it by mail, and we are not going to be allowed in the facility for that. So we are looking for a couple more poll workers. A lot of our poll workers have decided not to join us for this April 7 election, so if anybody has any free time, Wayne already gave some pretty good suggestions about colleges being out right now, so I'm going to see if I can poke some of those people into coming. But I just wanted to let you guys know that it was going to be here. That's the most important thing. Do you have any questions for me about the election right now?
Michelle, do you have a message to the public about absentee voting by mail?
I would love it if the public could vote absentee by mail. This morning, we had over 200 applications come in from 8:00 a.m. until noon. So right now, we're currently standing at 500 people absentee voting at this time with over 65 coming in the afternoon for in-person. So we're doing very well. You were in Maples. So anybody that could vote absentee, have it mailed to their house would be preferable. If you can go to myvote.wi.gov, they're either going to ask you for a photo ID to be uploaded or they're going to tell you you already have one on file. If anybody has trouble with that, please give us a call in the City Hall, 262-646-6220.
What is that website again, myvote?
Myvote.wi.gov.
And obviously, absentee voting by mail would be tremendous to limit everybody's exposure. It'd be good for everybody.
Based on our volume of people coming into the office this morning, we did not meet